This time, I will recognize Commissioner Williams for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those so inclined, please bow your head in prayer. Lord, as we enter this blessed season where we're looking forward to time with family, fun events, religious rituals, family rituals, all the joys and abundance of hearth and home, we also draw our minds and our hearts to those who have a less happy season, those who have experienced loss, loss of someone or perhaps many people who were very dear to them. We think about those who work or who are far away from home and are missing family, missing connections, missing perhaps some of those traditions and rituals that can make this time of year so special. We think about those that are struggling with lack, with, you know, not having their basic needs met. And, Lord, we think about those who are struggling with sickness and disease. Perhaps they don't get around as well as they used to. And so, Lord, as we're embracing and celebrating and thanking you for abundance and for all the good times of this season, we bring to you in petition of prayer those who are struggling, struggling with loneliness and loss and being away from home and sickness and, and struggling, having their needs met. Lord, we, we raise them up to you and ask for your care and protection and love and just surround and envelop them with your love and perfect peace and provision. In the name of your Son, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for informal comments?
Yes.
All right, we have one gentleman this evening, Mr. Joel Down.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Joel Down. I currently reside in Wesley Chapel, the village of Wesley Chapel. And today, I'm going to talk to you about multiple different issues that I just had top of mind and I don't often get to come to these meetings. So I just kind of want to lay a couple of different things out that I had in mind. First, I want to thank the staff and you guys as Commissioners, as I cannot normally do that, for you guys' public service and all the things that you guys do. I would also like to thank you guys for live streaming the meetings and recordings. As someone who cannot always come to these meetings, I re-watch these consistently and I just want to thank you guys for that public service. The first topic that I want to just talk about today is, as you obviously all were here, Thursday was the meeting about the water and sewer issues within the county. And I just, on that topic, I just want to let you know that I pray that God will be over whatever decision you guys make with that situation. As James 1:5 says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." So I just ask that you ask God for wisdom with whatever decision that you guys may decide. I don't really personally have an opinion on it, nor am I very qualified to talk on the topic by just seeing that as a big issue, as you all know, and just ask that you would ask God's wisdom in that situation. But on one specific thing about the water, obviously, as has been happening in previous meetings, there's the issue that people brought up about fluoride in the water. It seems to me that there is a great financial reason to reduce the fluoride that is in the water, so you don't have to pay for it to add to the water. I personally feel that residents should just add it if they decide to or not, so that the county doesn't have to pay for that as a whole. Obviously, there are the health implications that people can talk about. I'm not qualified to talk about those things, so I'm not going to mention those things. The last thing that I just wanted to mention is about the Monroe Airport. As you may know, the mayor, Robert Burns of Monroe, one of his campaign ideas was to expand the service at the airport. Obviously, that is a very big thing that could also happen. I could possibly see commercial airlines coming into there, similar to like how Concord works, Concord Regional Airport, where they have Allegiant. So I would just ask if you could, in the future, obviously, this is many, many years down the road probably, but just look into possibly having some type of commercial service, smaller commercial service, at the airport and not just necessarily just personal private planes and whatnot. In closing, I just want to reiterate that I pray that God will be with you with all the decisions that you make, whether it be about the water and sewer, whether it be about standard issues that we will be talking about tonight. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Down. The next, the next three items on our agenda are all public hearings. Madam Clerk, has anyone from the public signed up to speak at any of these public hearings?
No, sir, they could not.
We have no members of the public signed up to speak to any, speak on any of the public hearings this evening. The first public hearing on our agenda is item 23-837, a public hearing for text amendments to section 35.030 of the UDO. I will open the public hearing and recognize Lee Jensen, Planning Director, for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Chairman Raul, Vice Chair Helms, Board, Manager Matthews. This is a public hearing for a text amendment to the, to section 35-030, section of the Unified Development Ordinance, which deals with accessory dwelling units. This is a staff-initiated text amendment. I'll give you a little bit of background as to why staff is bringing this forward. Many times, we have folks that will come in to the office to ask to, to have an accessory dwelling. If you don't know what that is, an accessory dwelling unit is a small house that you can build on the property in addition to your primary home. It could be detached, it could be attached, it could be a house within a house, so to speak, many different forms it could take. But there's a, there's three zoning districts in, in the UDO that do not allow ADUs. And we get a lot of requests from folks that want to do those in that district. So we, we decided to bring this forward, just didn't want to have to have a citizen bring this to you. We just felt it best that we do it. The current language in the UDO only allows those ADUs in zoning districts that also allow two-unit houses by right. A two-unit house is basically a duplex. So that, if a duplex is allowed by right, then you can have a, an ADU. So they're allowed, duplexes are allowed in all residential zoning districts by right, except in RA 200, which is, which is essentially about a four-acre minimum zoning district, R 40 and R 10. In those districts, to do a duplex, you have to have a special use permit. There is no language in the ordinance that says, it just says that if, if duplexes are allowed by right, then ADUs are allowed by right. There's no, there's no language that says you can go to the board to get a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. As a result of that, you can't have accessory dwelling units in those three zoning districts. This proposed change would essentially just allow accessory dwelling units in all zoning districts, so it would allow it in those three, just like the rest of the zoning districts that the county has. And it no longer would require the 150% minimum lot size requirement. Essentially, that means if you have a 40,000 square foot lot, to be able to have an accessory dwelling unit on your property, you have to have 60,000 square feet. And I'll go into a little bit about that in just a second. You would basically just have to meet the minimum lot size requirement of the district. So if you're a R 40 district, you've got 40,000 square feet, you can meet that standard. HOAs can still regulate this. So if, if an HOA wanted to prohibit those or wanted to have extra requirements, they could still do that. We're not, you know, we don't want to interfere with homeowners' associations and what they may or may not want to do. They still have to obtain a building and zoning permit to ensure compliance with the ordinance. It's, it's important to note that ADUs have to be built to North Carolina Building Code. That, that's a requirement of our ordinance. They can't be mobile homes or parked model RVs or RVs. They have to be built to North Carolina Building Code. And, and there's some other regulations that go into it that we regulate from a zoning standpoint, which you'll see in just a second. If they're served by a septic system, environmental health will still go out and evaluate the site to ensure that the existing system on the property will work, or if it won't, you know, if, what improvements can be made to accommodate it, or if none, then, then you'll be able to do it. The, this was taken to Union County Land Use Board at their, their last meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval of this amendment. This is essentially the text change. So accessory dwelling units are allowed in all residential districts. And then that bottom one is where it changes the, the density from one and a half times the minimum lot size requirement to essentially just the minimum lot size requirement. So that, that's really the only two changes that we're talking about. That's just a chart to show, that's the three zoning districts. So we have a handful of, two handfuls of zoning districts there. It's allowed in all of them, except three. This amendment would allow it in all of them. And just a quick rationale, it would provide a little bit of flexibility for landowners. Most of these that, that come in are folks that either want to do one of two things. They either have an elderly parent that they want to have a house in their backyard, or a house within their house to kind of take care of that elderly parent, or they have a child that has recently graduated from high school or college that wants to stay in Union County, may not be able to afford a house quite yet, but they don't want to move outside, they got a job here, and this would allow them to, to do that. That being said, it's not, it's not restricted to that. So if somebody wanted to build, because I don't want to, I don't want you to think that that's, that's all that can be done. If, if somebody wanted to build one and rent it out to someone, they could do that as well. It kind of eliminates the arbitrary differences between zoning districts. And it also, going back to the, you know, the kid that's just gotten out of school and maybe wants to stay in Union County but can't quite afford a house, it can help increase opportunities for affordability for them to kind of stay here. That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Mr. Vice Chair.
Lee, just a quick question. Was there any rhyme or reason as to why RA 200 and R 40 and as well, as well as R 10 were excluded from allowing the ADUs?
I'm going to be honest with you. I, I don't know. I, I was around when, when that 2014 ordinance was, was written. I, I know there was some conversation about not allowing duplexes in, in those districts. And the only thing I can think of is that, that sort of made its way over into the, into the accessory dwelling unit section. So this would still not allow duplexes. Duplexes would not be allowed in those districts unless you got a special use permit. That, that's the only thing we could come to a conclusion from, from a staff standpoint.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And I will say that it is also kind of a big push at the state level. There's been legislation in the past few years that has really pushed ADUs. And I haven't liked all the legislation that's come out personally, but I, I think this is a good way to kind of get at it, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, the, the change here isn't just adding coverage for ADUs to R 200, R 40, and R 10. It also eliminates the two-unit duplex.
That size requirement.
That requirement.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
So this would just, I mean, this would open up ADUs for pretty much all residential types.
Yes. If, if you were, met the minimum lot size requirement of whatever that district was, then you could, you could have an, an, an ADU. Now, if you fell below that, so if you had a non-conforming lot that say was, maybe it was 30,000 square feet and R 40, this would still prohibit ADUs on, on those properties, because they don't meet the minimum.
Okay. So what if, what if there's an HOA or a covenant that prohibits ADUs?
They could still prohibit those.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we're not, we don't want to get into the business of, I don't know that we can get in the business of telling HOAs what to do.
Right.
But no, we don't want to interfere with that. So if there's a neighborhood that wants to prohibit that or have a higher standard, that's, that's, that's fine. They can do that.
And you had mentioned that there have been legislative attempts to, you know, bring bills to the General Assembly to, to change statewide the handling of ADUs in residential neighborhoods. I believe there was a bill this session, but that never made it into law, correct?
That's correct. It did not.
Okay. Let's see here. You know, there, there are a number of residential neighborhoods that, in Union County, that seem to kind of be moving or transitioning from majority owner occupied to rental. Do you, would it be fair to say that adoption of this change might accelerate that move from owner occupied to primarily rental in character?
Um, I don't know that the adoption of, of this ordinance would necessarily accelerate that. I think that's more of a result of corporate money and, and, and home buying and, and the rental market. So I think that's going to happen regardless. But what this could do, because it's, it's not, it's not tied to, you know, it's got to be an owner occupied house. So you, you essentially, you could have a landlord that rents out a house and then builds an ADU behind it and rents that out too. I, I think that's going to be rare. We don't, I don't think I've ever seen one of those, but let's not say it couldn't happen.
Also, my, my last question, and Brian, this, you might want to pipe in here. How might, how might this change allowing for ADUs change our sewer capacity planning and permitting?
Good question. So first off, as Lee said, if it's a septic system, it actually has to be evaluated to be able to handle.
Right.
For a septic system.
But if it's counted.
As far as for public sewer, essentially, there really isn't an additional permit for a public sewer. They're already connected to the sewer. We, we really wouldn't actually require anything. And the flow for an ADU is minimal, honestly, at best. A four-bedroom house is 280 gallons per day. This likely would not be four bedrooms, so it would be much lower. So I, I think the impact is relatively low, but there is no special permit that they would receive for connection to the sewer system.
It'd essentially be the same, I guess, as building a bedroom addition on, onto your house.
It, it's not uncommon for folks, and Lee didn't mention this, but garage apartments are oftentimes an ADU. And they just build a garage, put an apartment in there. It's the same, that flow just goes into the system, just like it would if there were just an additional bedroom.
Yeah.
So ADUs wouldn't show up in new obligated flows in our calculating, but they would show up at some point, presumably.
In actual flows.
In the actual flows.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Helms.
Lee, one of the things, building a second house on the property has its problems in the sense that, you know, if it's not an HOA, anybody can build a second house, right?
That's, that's correct. Yes. It'd have to meet, there's, there's a few requirements that are on your screen that has to meet. But yes, as long as it met those requirements, you can.
Well, what about your neighbors? I mean, I've experienced this. And, you know, it not necessarily best for your neighbor or neighborhood. I, I can't support it, especially what I've observed lately. I'll be honest with you. But, you know... I'll be honest with you, but, you know, you, you take a, an R40 lot, an acre's not that big, and you're going to put a second home on it. Is there a square footage, maximum, minimum on it?
So, yes, there, you, you can only have one accessory dwelling unit per parcel, and the accessory unit cannot be more than 50% of the size of the primary dwelling. So if you have a, a 2,000 square foot house, then your accessory dwelling can only be 1,000 square feet. It also has to match the, the type of materials you, you use on the house, so it can't, you know, it can't stand out. It's also, it also has to be accessory to the house, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't really be sitting out front, it should be beside or behind the house, almost like a storage building. Should be that. And then, you know, you've got some different ways down here. These aren't really regulatory, but just different ways that you can create those. You know, it can be inside the existing house. It doesn't have to be necessarily a standalone building. An accessory building can be inside the existing house, it could be, you know, adding an addition onto your house, you know, it could be a detached accessory structure built to, you know, North Carolina Building Code. So, so yeah, there's a number of ways that you could create that.
Any further questions for Director Jensen?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Lee, so if I understand this correctly, I mean, the, the sewer impact is going to be kind of minimal. It's probably going to be very similar to what we would see with like a, a home remodel or a large addition to an existing structure.
Right.
We would still permit it, so it would go through all the different stages of permitting, inspections, that sort of thing.
Yes.
All right. All right, thanks, sir.
Anything further? We don't have any other speakers from the community signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public hearing. The second public hearing on the agenda is item 23848, a public hearing concerning a Step One New Economic Development Incentive Grant for Project Ottawa. I will recognize Chris Plante, EDC Executive Director, for this item.
Chairman Raul, Commissioners Manager Matthews, thank you so much. I'm pleased to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request by Osmo's U.S. Corporation, formerly known as codename Project Ottawa. Our office has been working with Osmo's U.S. Corporation since earlier this year. Osmo's is a Canadian firm that is looking to expand its presence in the United States, bringing with it its poultry processing facility that will directly support its 150 quick-serve or fast food restaurants. After establishing the poultry lines in the building under consideration, Osmo plans to expand its production lines to include homemade sauces and sides as well. The new processing facility will serve as an anchor to establish new franchises throughout the eastern coast of the United States, as well as throughout the rest of the U.S. at some point. They're considering a building located in the Sutton Park area that has previously been a food processing facility within the city of Monroe. And the company is considering an investment of roughly $4.5 million, including the purchase and installation of equipment. The actual investment will be significantly higher because they'll be acquiring the building as well, but that building does not qualify because it's already on the tax rolls toward the incentive. So the incentive is only for the new tax base to the city, or, excuse me, to the Union County. If Monroe's in Union County selected, the company commits to hiring at least 10 new jobs, but anticipates up to 42 jobs in the facility. To qualify for the incentive, the company must invest a minimum of $3 million, but again, plans to invest four and a half. The final, and finally, the, this is a competitive situation between Monroe and Union County and two other locations in other states. As part of the company's due diligence, they have indicated that incentives are a very important factor for the project, and the ultimate location and final decision will occur later. Part of that due diligence is the incentives. City of Monroe has already, on the December 10th, excuse me, December 12th, approved a similar incentive. Tonight, so we're asking for a Step One for New Company Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $67,500 over a five-year period, based upon Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year for the company's anticipated investment of $4.5 million. And that's again, in new equipment. Based on the investment and holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay an estimated ad valorem tax on the new equipment of $132,250 over the five-year grant period. When you factor in depreciation, these numbers do change a little bit because, again, being mostly equipment, that depreciation's going to take effect. And so the incentive grant will change slightly from the 67.5. We anticipate paying out roughly $60,345 over the five years, and the ad valorem tax revenue will most likely adjust from the 132 to 50 down to 118 to 76. The actual tax revenue to the county obviously depends upon the assessed value, tax rate, and other things, as well as the depreciation, which changes every year. We did a project cost benefit analysis based on this, and during the grant period, the first five years, it's 1.92 to 1, so almost a 2 to 1 ratio to the benefit of the county, and then over the first 10 years of the project, so the first five years under incentives, and then the next five years with incentives retired, would be 2.22 to 1. So therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission staff recommend the award of a Step One New Company Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grant for Osmo's U.S. Corporation in the amount, again, not to exceed $67,500 for, to secure this $4.5 million investment, and to gain another international firm for the county. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Catherine Nash of Ryan LLC. They've been helping the company through their, both incentives as well as site location, so she's here if you have any questions. Otherwise, again, as, as we ask you to, as you look at this, if you do choose to approve, to please approve it for the Osmo U.S. Corporation, not Project Ottawa. Thank you. Any questions?
What is the spelling of the company name, Osmo's?
O-S-M-O-W apostrophe S. That's a challenge for Clemson grad, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will now close the public hearing. The final public hearing on the agenda is item 23850, a public hearing concerning a Step Two Economic Development Grant for the Stafford Corrugated Products Incorporated. I will recognize Ron Mail, existing industry manager for the EDC for this item. Mr. Mail.
Thank you, Chairman Raul, Commissioners, Manager Matthews. It is my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request by Stafford Corrugated Products Incorporated, otherwise referred to as Project Ruby. Stafford Corrugated has been in Union County since 1994, so almost 30 years. They're located at 4907 Indian Trail Fairview Road, where they currently employ 29 people. They assemble and distribute machine parts and supplies that keep corrugated box manufacturers operating. In fact, they supply all corrugated box plants in the United States. The company is considering relocating its assembly, distribution, and corporate offices to a nine-acre parcel contiguous to its current location. The plan is to build a new 60,000-square-foot structure, which will enable the company to better serve its ever-growing list of customers. Anticipated capital investment is $10 million, with a projected construction completion date of the fourth quarter of 2024. The company is committed to retaining its current number of employees, and the company has an average wage of $36 per hour. Our office and the company began discussing the opportunity earlier this year, and they have indicated that incentives are a very important factor for the project. So tonight, we're requesting your consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $190,000, paid over five years, based upon Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of, again, $10 million. $10 million in the new building. Based on this investment and holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay estimated ad valorem taxes on the new taxable investment of $10 million, a tax revenue of $294,000 over the same grant period. Of course, actual tax revenue to Union County will be based on the current tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year. As we do with all of our projects, we perform a cost benefit analysis, and this project shows a 1.58 to 1 ratio over the first five years of the project, or the grant period, and that increases significantly to 26.7 to 1 ratio over the life of the project. And the reason that increases to such a level is that this investment is almost exclusively in real property, so you don't have to figure in the depreciation of personal property. Additionally, the company does have an existing incentive grant in place for a project dating back to 2020. Considering the previous project's incentive was directly associated with the construction of the current building they're seeking to vacate, the company, assuming the passage of the new incentive request before you tonight, will forego the remaining incentive payments from that 2020 project. And those are three payments that they will forego. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission staff recommend the award of this Step Two Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grant to Stafford Corrugated Products in an amount not to exceed $190,000 to help secure this $10 million investment. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tony DeBro. Tony is President of Stafford Corrugated Products, and he's available to answer any questions that you might have. That, thank you.
Any questions? I'll now close the public hearing. The next matter on the agenda is item 23860, Proclamation for Cervical Cancer Awareness Month for January 2024. I recognize Kristy Chambers for this item.
Thank you very much. My name is Kristy Chambers. I'm a resident of Union County, and I am a stage-four cervical cancer survivor. Cervical cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths in women globally, which is amazing when you realize it's preventable. Proclamations like these only help to give awareness to cervical cancer in the hopes that we can better educate people, to encourage immunizations, and eventually to eradicate the disease from the globe. I thank you very, very much for having this proclamation. It is such an opportunity, too, to realize that we have a program here in our county that benefits both breast cancer and cervical cancer, especially knowing that cervical cancer impacts those communities of color and those in lower, with lower finances. So to know that that program exists in our county to help assist those women in paying for regular screenings is something to be very, very proud of. Thank you.
All in favor of adopting the proclamation?
So moved in, aye.
The next two items on the agenda, items 23... Okay. Ms. Chambers, could you step back up here, please, ma'am? We have, we have a proclamation to present to you. Excellence in Financial Reporting and Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. I'll recognize Beverly Lyles, Financial Directory for these, Finance Director for these items.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's not very often that we get to brag on our staff, but tonight, I'm very pleased that I get to do that. These individuals work hard behind the scenes every day to carry out the financial operations of this county, and later on tonight, we'll actually be presenting to you our fiscal year 23 audit as well, and I'm not going to ask them to stay for the entire meeting, but I did want to recognize them for their special dedication of our team for the completion of that audit as well while they're here. While we attended a conference two weeks after our audit was due, we were made aware that we were only in the category of one of eight counties across the entire state to complete our audit on time and have it turned in on time. So I think that speaks volumes to the dedication of our staff, their talent, as well as the dedication of our departments throughout the organization that actually play a role in that for our single audit testing, and also the relationship that we have with our audit firm to make sure we get these things completed on time each year and turned in. So the two awards that we're going to be presented tonight, the first one is the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Government Officers, Finance Officers Association, excuse me, GFOA, has awarded us, again, for many years in a row, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the prior fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. What this means is this report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of their program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure of our financials. This means we clearly communicate our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our local government here and our management staff. Also tonight, we are being presented the Popular Annual Financial Report. This is a much condensed version of our financial statements. To be eligible for this award, we must also submit our excellent award for financial reporting that we just talked about. Each eligible, eligible report is reviewed by judges who evaluate, evaluate the report based on the following category: reader appeal, understandability, distribution message, methods, creativity, and other elements. We also receive help on this because we can make this unique to Union County from our public communications team, and we appreciate their support on that. So tonight, we have with us on our staff Mia Griffin, if you all will come join us. She's our administrative assistant. We have Alex Whitaker, who is also one of our accountants, Brady, who is our payroll accountant, who you all appreciate every other week. We also have Amy, our Assistant Finance Director here with us, and Abra Kruke, who is our Senior Accountant, who is our CPA on staff that does a lot of heavy lifting for our audit. The individuals that could not be with us tonight, I wanted to recognize them as well. Trina Horn, she's our Accounting Services Supervisor. Shannon McDonald, an accountant. Heather Howie, accounting specialist, and Kiara McLendon, our other senior accounting technician. So thank you, and we recognize your great work, and we have two awards to be presented, so.
Next on the agenda is item twenty-three eight-thirty-eight, recognition, recognition of changemaker, of the changemaker award recipient. I will recognize Liz Cooper, Public Communications Director, for this item.
Thank you, Chairman. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Management Team, thank you for the opportunity. I'm very pleased to introduce to you Erin Steele, our Digital Content Manager. Erin recently received an international award, Second Place Changemaker Award in the Digital Government Awards by Granicus. Granicus is a technology solution firm that works with public sector clients. The Digital Government Awards honor transformational achievements that improve resident engagement, service delivery, and government efficiency. Erin has led or assisted with the redesign or development of six county websites in just the last two years. The redesign of UnionCountyNC.gov, our employee internet, County Connect, our development services website resource to easily help homeowners interested in developing their property, the Sheriff's Office website redesign, the library website development, and Engage Union County, our community engagement tool. Following these big achievements and well-deserved recognition, Erin has no signs of slowing down. She is now serving as project lead for a large website accessibility enhancement project so that our website content can be more accessible to residents and visitors who need special accommodations or customizations to view our website content. And she's also helping with updates to Union County Water's website presence. So Erin is so deserving. She is such a fantastic asset to this whole organization. She works tirelessly to support every county department, every employee who needs any assistance with website content, both internally and externally. And I'm so excited to recognize her and have you guys recognize her for this well-deserved recognition. So please join me in recognizing Erin Steele for Changemaker Award.
The next item on the agenda for consideration is the consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any revisions requested to this consent agenda?
Do you want to make it, or me? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add to the consent agenda the following item. Motion to authorize county staff to negotiate and execute an agreement providing for the mutual release of claims and non-disparagement among and between Union County, Union County Commissioners, and Mark Watson related to the employment contract of the former Union County manager, such agreement being substantially consistent with the following material terms and other legal provisions. One, payment of four hundred thousand to Mark Watson to be made in two equal parts, one in December two thousand and twenty-three and one in January two thousand and twenty-four. Two, a mutual non-disparagement provision between Mr. Watson, Union County Commissioners, and Union County. Three, authorizing county staff to take reasonably necessary budgetary adjustments and actions to make these payments effective, including without limitation authorization of move funds from contingency fund into an appropriate settlement fund. Four, including other essential legal terms and conditions. And finally, five, authorizing county staff to take all other reasonable administrative and budgetary actions necessary to give effect to this agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Do you need to take an action on adding?
Mr. Chairman, is there a vote on that motion to add it to the business portion of the agenda?
All in favor of adding Commissioner Williams' motion to the consent agenda, I'm sorry, to the business agenda, indicate by saying aye. I would like to make a motion to add an item to the consent agenda, also authorizing the county manager to negotiate and execute a real property purchase and sale agreement concerning two parcels of land located in Wingate totaling approximately thirty-five acres as our tax parcels, parcels zero-nine zero-five-seven zero-one-one and parcel number zero-nine zero-five-seven zero-one-one A for use in connection with the Sheriff's Office or other county facilities for a purchase price of one million, six hundred thousand dollars, substantially consistent with this agenda item. And two, terminate the agreement if the contract conditions are not met or if deemed in the best interest of the county, each of the county, in the best interest of the county, each in the county manager's discretion. All in favor of this motion of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
Okay. We're now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item.
Mr. Chairman.
Need an actual vote on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended?
Aye.
We're now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is agenda, is item number twenty-three eight-forty-nine, consideration of a Step One Economic Development Grant, incentive grant to Project Ottawa, which I believe is, not the proper name, is Osmoos. I will recognize Chris Plata for this item.
We have no additional information to provide. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Richard Hems, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'd, I'd make a motion to award a Step One Economic Development Incentive Grant to Project Ottawa in the amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, five hundred over a five-year period, and two, authorize county manager to negotiate and execute the agreement substantially consistent with this agenda.
Mr., yeah, may I make one request? Did actually use the firm's name, Osmoos?
Osmoos.
Osmoos, sorry. I wasn't paying attention earlier, but name wrong, but yes, use the company's name. I'd appreciate that.
It's Osmoos.
Osmoos, O-S-M-O-W, apostrophe S.
Osmoos U.S. Corporation.
U.S. Corporation.
Thank you, Chris. Okay.
Any further discussion on Mr., on Commissioner Hems' motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The next item of business is item twenty-three eight-forty-nine, consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant to Stafford Corrugated Products Incorporated. I will recognize Ron Mail for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have no further information, but be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to award a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant for Stafford Corrugated Products, Inc., Project Ruby, in the amount not to exceed one hundred ninety thousand dollars over a five-year period.
Any further, any further on Vice Chairman Hems' motion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is item twenty-three eight-fifty-seven for year two thousand and twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. I'll recognize Beverly Lyles Finance Director for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This evening, we're pleased to present to you the final fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three financial statements and audit report. This is going to be a two-part presentation. Tonight, we have our audit firm here with us, Daniel Garberd, he's a partner with Cherry Becker. He will be going over the audit process and their opinion of our financial statements. And following his presentation, I will do a brief presentation on the major highlights of the financial statements for FY twenty-three. We won't get into a lot of detail because we will go through that during our budget process as we begin planning for the fiscal year twenty-five process. You do have the audit here for you tonight. As I said, I'll go over the highlights, but I do encourage you to read through this on your spare time, maybe when you're going to bed at night, you want to go to sleep really fast, to get the full disclosures of our financials and what all this information really means that's important to our county. So Dan Garberd, if you'd please join us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. This is an important part of the audit process where we are able to develop, provide you with the insights of our audit, what we did during our audit process, and there are certain required communications throughout this slides that we are required to do it every year. Some of these things are things we've communicated with you in the past that haven't changed, so I'll go through those fairly quickly. But if anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me. Getting right into it, I also like to just start off by recognizing our internal team that made this possible to do the audit, and that's myself as the engaging director leading this team. We had Scott Anderson as second reviewer, Stephanie Rosensky was the manager on this engagement, and Jace and Ashley were the senior and associate that did most of the work. For the results of our audit, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That's all in which to render opinion, provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And we also issue an opinion as it relates to your compliance with federal and state grants. In all cases, we had issued unmodified opinions. These unmodified opinions, also known as a clean opinion, is the highest level opinion we can give under our auditing standards. This slide is just a way of telling you that we audit compliance, but in terms of internal controls, while we look at internal controls and do provide comments, if we, we find areas that could need improvement, we do not rule on the effectiveness of the internal control, so we do not give an opinion on effectiveness. And then for internal control communication, just to define for you all what means to, when we have any findings, material weakness is one, that a material item could go undetected and, and on a timely basis to be presented to you all. And then a significant deficiency being one, less than a material weakness, but still important enough to give you all communication. I'm happy to say we noted no material weaknesses. We did have one significant deficiency, and that related to a grant program. On this slide, the grant program in question here was the aging cluster. These are three programs that are completed together as one testing for our single audit purposes, where there's federal and state money included in this, this program. And there was one, one of the three programs did not have a formal sign-off. Review was being taken place, but it just was not formally signed off by staff that we could identify as part of our process. And so we believe, we believe it rose to the level of a significant deficiency, which again was not material to the, to program or to the financial statements of the county, but still important enough for us to, to give, give you information about this. As part of our audit, if we have any corrected or uncorrected misstatements, as part, we are to communicate that to you all. We, I'm happy to say we had no corrected misstatements or any uncorrected, which means basically what was provided to us at the beginning of the audit is what you see in your annual comprehensive financial report with no adjustments made from the audit. These next few slides are those slides of, of those general things we communicate every year. Not a lot has changed here. Note one is where your significant accounting policies lie within the financial statements. You did adopt a new accounting pronouncement. There was a new accounting pronouncement to record subscription-based information technology arrangements. This is basically software that you have that goes exceeds past a year. You record that as an asset and a liability on your books, so it's really a balance sheet only effect for the most part. Your income statement really did not change as a result of the implementation of the standard. We evaluate related party transactions as part of our audit. If we become aware of one that management has not identified to us, we are to make that clear to you all. We did not note any related parties other than what was communicated to us, and we noted, we noted no issues with any arms-length transactions as it relates to related parties. Under our standards, if we find something that deemed to be significant or unusual, so outside the normal course of business or otherwise appear unusual due to the timing, nature, or size, we are to make you aware of that. We noted no such instances as part of our audit this year. To develop the financial statements, there are a number of estimates that go into the development of financial statement line items by management. We look over those estimates, make sure they're reasonable, make sure also they're consistent with previous years. Lot of those estimates surround your other post-employment benefit liabilities and your pension liabilities as it relates to your actuarial studies to determine what that long-term liability is. We also have related to depreciation and allowance for downfall accounts, your landfill, and then also for your leases and the subscription-based information technology arrangements. Financial statements disclosures are clear, neutral, and consistent. We didn't, we noted no particular disclosure that we needed to make note of here for you all. Non-atest services, so attest being audit services, so this is any non-audit services that we may render. We are prior to prepare the data collection form, this is a form that's submitted to the federal government, providing the results of our federal single audit. Management has the proper skills, knowledge, and expertise to oversee these services, and we are independent of the county even with providing these services. And with independence being a cornerstone of our profession, we do assert that we are independent of the county. We encountered no difficulties as part of our audit. We encountered no disagreements with management. There were no audit consultations, so this would be any internal consultations. And we had a management representation letter that was dated October thirty-first that was signed by management the date we issued the financials. There were no management consultations, so no shopping of an opinion with other auditors or other accountants. There are no other findings or issues noted as part of our audit. As of date of this presentation, no fraud, illegal acts, or violations of laws or regulations were noted, and no events or conditions that substantial doubt that the county can, can't continue as a going concern. Next, a couple of things here are information within the annual comprehensive report. We give an opinion on the financial statements. For acquired supplemental information, which is your management discussion analysis that's near the beginning of your financials, and then also the pension schedule in the back, we do not provide any assurance or opinion on those schedules. For supplementary information, this is your budget to actual schedules and combining schedule, fund schedules in the back. We do look at that information and make sure it's consistent with the information in the financials, and we found no issues with that, and we, we render it in relation to opinion on that information. And for other information, this includes your introductory and statistical sections, which is the beginning and, and end of your financial statements. We read the information, but we do not provide any opinion on this information either. Next, here are just two accounting pronouncements that will be applicable to the county in the coming years. GAZI one hundred, next year, GAZI one oh one until, not until two thousand and twenty-five, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. They should not have a major impact on your financials. Next year is just more of a clarification of what is a correction of an error versus a change in accounting principles, and how that is accounted for within your financial statements. And then one oh one, compensate assets, has to do with your accrued sick leave and vacation time and, and how that's being accounted for. The next few slides are the last section I have for you on this report, and this is just a couple of things that the local government commission has provided that we communicate to you all in open session regarding some financial performance indicators that they deem to be significant to all counties and all cities within United States, within North Carolina. So you can see here, your fund balance available as a percentage of expenditures showing at thirty-eight point eight-four percent. Their minimum threshold is sixteen percent, but I do want to point out here that this calculation isn't similar to the calculation you probably received from finance throughout the year. The, the normal calculation you might be seeing is more looking at your unassigned fund balance to expenditures. This includes other restricted funds as well, as well as debt service fund. So that's why it's a little higher than what you're used to hearing or seeing when you talk about fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Next here is a quick ratio for your water sewer, basically your, a ratio of your current assets to current liabilities, where you're sitting at a four point four-six. I will say that, that, well, the, the LGC deems it being one, a one ratio, being able to pay off your current liabilities with the current assets to be sufficient. You have more here, but I don't see this as an outlier from other counties or cities that have water and sewer lines and funds. And basically, what I'm seeing is that there's additional funds set aside for future capital projects that are in that number in some, in some cases, and so that's why it's a little bit larger ratio, but nothing to be concerned about there with that. This next slide here is a new one. They just made this a performance indicator in the last year. And so what it shows here, it showed you the last three years of what this is, and this is your water and sewer condition of assets. Basically, the formula is to take one minus your gross depreciable assets divided by your accumulated depreciation to see what the life of your, your assets is. And so what they're saying is, is a ratio of .5 or less is considered a deteriorating assets ratio, where at a .5 or higher is considered to be adequate for their calculations. And then I will also note here, we do a number of cities and counties that have water sewer things here, and I've seen anywhere between .48 to .55 in the ones I've, I've been working on this past year. Budgeted tax levy for general fund did not have any more than 3% uncollected, so you didn't budget for more than you collected. You had a positive general fund balance, no late debt service payments, effective pre-audit process, no budget violations, no statutory violations. And so with this year, you don't have, last year, I think you had a finding that you had to submit to the local government commission a response letter. You did not have anything here that you need to submit to them. Single audit findings are outside of the scope of what the LGC wants you to communicate with them. So with that, I'll open it up if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just, just to be absolutely clear, when you list 2023 numbers here, that's for fiscal year 2023, meaning ending June 30th, 2022.
No, 2023.
No, but yeah, 23, that's right, ending the summer of 2023, that's right.
Correct.
But, okay, thank you.
Thank you all. And just one thing about the water sewer ratio index being a little low, that will change as we add the Yadkin plants on. That will give us a better ratio, a better outlook with our assets being newer. So that'll, you should see that change as we go forward. So just real quick, quickly, I want to go through the major highlights and the changes from our year-end results. I'll talk about our government-wide, which is our full accrual statement, our general funds. I say funds because the state only allows you to have one general fund, but we have chosen to bifurcate our funds out for budgetary purposes, and also hit some major highlights for the water and sewer funds. The first statement here you see is our government-wide financial statements. This breaks down our governmental activities versus our business-type activities. The business-type activities that we have as a county is water and sewer and solid waste. All of our other funds would roll into governmental activities. For fiscal year ending 23, note that our assets and deferred outflows exceeded the liabilities and deferred inflows by around $432 million. What this means is this is our total net position of the county. If you're more familiar with the public sector, this would be somebody's net value of their asset. Our governmental activities total net position by itself is only around 3.2 million, which is very low. And the reason for this is that counties in North Carolina have to carry the long-term debt liability for schools, but we do not carry those assets on our books. The schools actually carry those assets, so we never get the benefit of offsetting the asset with the outstanding debt for those particular projects. The major changes in our government-wide financial statements this year for our assets, we saw an increase in our cash and investments of around $25.5 million. This is related to unspent bond proceeds that we have in the bank, change year-over-year. We also saw an increase in our capital asset value. The reason the majority of this went up is because the construction in progress and what we actually spent on the Yadkin projects during fiscal year 23, those become construction work-in-progress assets, so we get to recognize those even before the project is actually completed. For our liability major changes, we saw a decrease in our accounts payable balance by $16 million. And the reason for this is the decrease in payable is due on the construction projects in the prior years. We had a higher outstanding balance due to contractors mainly for Yadkin and for retainers that we were holding, but if you recall, we were completing that project pretty quickly during this past fiscal year. These next two items for the net OPEB liability and the local government retirement system pension liability, we see a pretty significant change in these from year to year, and the reason for that is the actual measurement dates that our actuarial reports consultants are using for OPEB is different actually than what Elders is using. So for OPEB, our measurement date is December 22nd, while the Elders' measurement date is December 2021. There's a lot of assumptions that go into those actuarial reports to create what our long-term liability is and how those calculations are worked out. Some of those factors are inflation rate, wage growth, and the long-term investment rate of return, and also the life expectancy of the retirees that are receiving those benefits. Because those two dates were different, if you recall, in the December 2022 timeframe through this most current fiscal year, we saw an increase in interest rates in the market. So that helped decrease that net OPEB liability down. The opposite is true for the retirement benefit. Their measurement date for their report is December 2021. If you think back to that timeframe in the market, the interest rates were a lot lower, so that yielded an increase in our proportionate share of the overall local government retirement system. I would expect that in the next year or two that we would see that maybe go the opposite way, with them increasing the investment rate of return for the current market conditions. We also saw an increase in our long-term liability. This is due to us issuing the 2023 school bonds that were approved by the voters for Forest Hills and East Elementary, net of our debt service payments that we made during the fiscal year. We also saw a decrease in our liability that is due to other governments of around $21 million. This is a reflection of the federal funding that we received for ARPA dollars and our emergency rental assistance federal grant for several years back. We received that money upfront, but the federal government said you cannot recognize that as a revenue until you actually spend it, because if you don't spend it, you have to send us the money back to Treasury. But in fiscal year 23, this represents the amount that we actually spent on those two particular grants, so we're able to reduce that liability payment due back to Treasury. And I'm going to stop there and ask if you have any questions about the major changes for the government-wide financial statements. Moving ahead, we're going to look at the general funds. Keep in mind, this is a combination of all of our general funds added together for the county. This includes our general operating fund, our debt service fund, and our economic development fund. This is as of fiscal year 23, so we did not have broken out at that time the education debt fund or the education operating fund. We did not break those out until the adoption of the current year's budget. So when you see this data, it does not include that broken out. So our actual revenues collected for the general funds in total was around $371 million. We actually collected an additional $10 million compared to budget for that. So that's important to keep in mind when we start to talk about how we added money to our fund balance this year. How that's generated is you either collect excess revenues, or you don't spend as much as you budget to actually add to the increase in fund balance. The majority of the revenue that we saw an increase in was in our abolumb taxes from discoveries or additional higher vehicle cost, new homes being put online, and we saw an increase in our investment revenue. The market was really good this past year compared to prior years. So we budget conservatively for that investment income because we cannot predict what the market's going to be from year to year. For our actual expenditures, we spent around $333 million. So this was under budget by about 11.7, but if you do the percentage of the actual budget, that's about a 4% savings, which is normal for attrition in a budget our size three to 4%. Our other financing sources and expenditures was around $5.2 million. What factors into these type of categories is our transfers in and out of other funds, any bond issuance that we did, the cost of that, or any bond premiums that we recognized as revenue. So with all of these factors, we had an increase in all general fund fund balance together of around $32.6 million. Keep in mind, that includes bond premiums that we issued on the 2023 school bonds. Is there any questions about that before I move on to the fund balance categories? So for all the general funds combined, I wanted to go over the fund balance categories and what each one of these means. So you're aware, when we talk about fund balance, what does that mean when we talk about these different categories? So it starts with nonspendable, so it starts with the most restrictive category, and then it goes down to the least restrictive. So nonspendable really means nonspendable. You cannot convert that into cash to actually spend on anything else. So these items are things such as inventory or any prepaid items that we have. We do prepay for postage on our postage machine, so we have to record that as a nonspendable fund balance category. The restricted fund balance category is restricted by a specific purpose, by external party. So this means if you have any laws in place, any contracts or encumbrances that are already in place, or anything that the state says that you have to restrict, such as your accounts receivable balances, that goes into the restricted fund balance category. The committed fund balance category is your fund balance policy that you adopt. So this is your 20% fund balance policy of the next year's budget. So this $71 million represents 20% of the operating expenditures for FY24's budget. And then you have assigned fund balance. This means any action that the board has taken prior to the date that we issue the financial statements to allocate fund balance for a purpose. So anything that you said during the FY24 budget process, you wanted to assign for a capital project or one-time use, or we already had an encumbrance in place, or a major project that was rolled, the budget was rolled into FY24, that goes into the assigned fund balance. And then the less, least restrictive is your unassigned fund balance. This is where you, as a board, can take action to actually use these funds at a prior date for one-time expenditures or capital items. And keep in mind, the unassigned fund balance here was as of the day we did the financial statement, so this was as of October 31st. So since then, you actually, as a board, you've taken some actions to actually appropriate some of that fund balance, and we'll talk about that in the next slide. I did want to point out, the unassigned fund balance and the debt service fund, this is really a result of the bond premium being issued on the school debt and the revenue replacement dollars that we put into the school fund. So this is to be used to offset the debt service cost on the 2023 school bonds. This is not shown as assigned because the bifurcation of the funds for education debt did not take place until FY24. So you really have already said and committed as a board that you want to spend that money for debt service calls on that particular bond. We were very fortunate to have the bond premium and the revenue replacement dollars to offset a tax rate increase for those bonds that we issued this past year. Is there any questions about that before I move on?
But once that bond premium gets exhausted, paying for the early, the initial debt service, that's when the, we're going to need to rely on general revenues to pay that debt service.
Right.
Okay.
So this next slide shows your general fund unassigned fund balance and the actions that you've taken since October 31st. So on November 6th, you actually took two actions. One, to appropriate fund balance for the Board of Election Workers for the most recent election, and to appropriate money for the farm land conservation easement program that the county has agreed to start. So today, your total available unassigned fund balance is $15,888,000. We will talk about this in more detail as we start going through the capital planning process for the FY25 budget, as we go through workshops with you all to determine what is the best use of those funds for capital or one-time related items. Is there any questions about that before I move on? At very high level, what is the percentage of where our revenues come from? No surprise, property taxes is our highest generator of revenues, followed by sales tax, and then followed by governmental revenues, which is any inter-local government, inter-local agreement that you have in place with towns to pay for deputies or state or federal dollars coming into the county. And then, as a very high level, where does the money go? Highest percentage is education, followed by public safety, followed by debt equally and human services equally, and 10% for general government functions. Very high level discussion for water and sewer fund. For FY23, year-end actuals, they had operating revenue of about $81 million. They had operating expenditures, including depreciation, which was around $20 million, of around $56 million. I did want to note, if you compare operating revenues year-over-year, the current operating revenue for '23 included the state grant funding for Site B. We had billed that to the state, so we're required to record that as an accounts receivable, that that money is due to us from the state. And when we do that, we recognize the revenue from a full accrual accounting standpoint. So if you were to take that out of the operating revenues, you'd kind of be back neutral to where they were in '22. So their increase in debt position from a full accrual basis was around $30 million. And this is a full accrual snapshot of the water sewer fund for their income statement for the year. Operating revenues over expenditures was $25 million. They recognized investment earnings from the work that we do on investment, as well as any bond proceeds that they still have unspent. They get to recognize the investment earnings on that as well. Interest and fees, this is the debt, interest and fees that we pay. I think it's important to note on this income statement, because it is full accrual, this does not reflect the principal payment of debt. So if you were looking at an actual expenditure standpoint, you would need to add into these expenditures about $10 million to see the full cost of what we're paying for debt service. The loss on joint venture, this represents our change in net assets for Catawba River, and this is really due to their assets actually depreciating off year-over-year, and that's why we have to recognize that loss. So miscellaneous non-operating revenues, this is their sale of like surplus items or any equipment that they're retiring out. So the contributions that are on here on their income statement is developer contribution. So once a developer finishes a subdivision, they turn those water and sewer lines over to the county to operate. So $12 million represents that as well. And this represents their total net position of $417 million. Is there any questions about this? So that's all I have. Unless you have any questions for me, I would ask that you take action to accept the audit report as presented by the auditor. The LGC has approved the audit report and gave their blessing.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams.
Motion to accept the audit report as presented.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I believe that we may need to just have a point of order here regarding, pardon me, regarding item 23851. So when I made my motion earlier, I neglected to add in the second portion of that motion, which is to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. I would like to, if, if appropriate at this point, I would like to make a motion to, or amend that motion previously, and the motion would be to award a Step II economic development incentive grant to Stafford Corrugated Products, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $190,000 over a five-year period, and to authorize our county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item.
All in favor of Vice Chair's motion?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. The next item, businesses, item 103857, the facility use policy discussion. I'll recognize County Manager Brian Matthews at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I was going to say, if you wouldn't mind passing those down. So previously, the board had asked us to bring back some, some options and some way to consider how we handle our facility use by residents, nonprofits, other individuals and entities that often want to use our spaces. We have some policies in place for ones that we rent, but for spaces that we don't really charge for, like the library space- but for spaces that we don't really charge for, like the library space, like our historic courthouse, our policies are a little different. And, you know, one of the things that we need to take into consideration is how that applies to all individuals and all groups that are attempting to use those facilities. There was a policy that was previously adopted, I believe, in November of '22. There has been some discussion about that policy having some impact on individuals and groups not necessarily being able to use that, those facilities. So staff took a first blush at giving you a draft for you to have as a discussion point. This is certainly not intended to be the final version, and it is obviously not intended for you to vote on that tonight, is really to get discussion, direction, input from you on how you'd like to proceed with possibly amending your facility use policy. I think, if you're okay with it, what we can do maybe is focus on some of the sorts of the process and some of the amendments to what are in this draft, and then just sort of open it up to questions and comments and how the board would like to proceed on that. Are you okay with that process? Okay. So keep in mind that I think one of the ones that we really had some concerns on were certainly a library use space. And with that, what we attempted to do is provide for some parameters in which individuals and groups would have to meet in order to use the facility. What that, of course, that means is as long as you meet those parameters, then you'd be allowed to use the facility. This isn't about telling Group A or Group B, no. It's about can you meet the parameters? And if you can, then Group A can go and Group B can go. One of the things that I think was important is that we put in place, they recommended that the entities be either residents of Union County, or if they are a nonprofit, that they either are housed or located in Union County or have a chapter in Union County. We felt that that was a good option to consider. And that way, you're ensuring that those groups and those individuals true have a connection to Union County. The county's participation would certainly be an option if it is us participating in that. And obviously, we can house any event we wish to, especially if we are hosting that event that is, that's available. We would allow events hosted by county business partners, including organizations with the county has a contract or memorandum of understanding. So those entities would be allowed to use those facilities if we have them as a business partner. And then, any type of events hosted by other governmental entities. So that's, those are the uses that, in this draft, would be allowed. Now, there are some, I think, which are important to be talked about prohibited conduct, and I think that's important when it comes to how you enforce the policy, if the board wants to go in this direction. And that's Section 6, and I want to talk about that. Number one is you can't exceed the occupancy of the facility or the ability to conduct the use in the facility. You can't cause obstructions in the facility upon the grounds or the ingress and egress. You can't cause obstructions to traffic or create problems with street sidewalks and those during business hours. Can't involve noxious odors. You can't produce harmful or distracting lights. And cannot be unreasonably loud or disturbing. Also, it involves user activities that pose a danger to those that are in or around the facility. They'd have to be reasonably likely to disturb regular business hours. So you can't, I'm sorry, they have to be likely to be part of business hours. They can't involve illegal activity, including display of materials or actions that violate Article 26 of Chapter 14 of the North Carolina General Code. They cannot involve the display, exhibition, or presentation of content that falls in the category of unprotected speech, as established by the state or federal law. It involves programming or materials not suitable for young children and minors who may be in and around the meeting spaces, such as alcohol, tobacco, illicit drugs, nudity, sexualized conduct, or profanity. And this is another one, involve conduct, involve conducting commercial, retail, or profit-making activities. One of the things that I want to stress, too, is that we also recommend that the facilities, when being used, be open to the public. What that means is that if any group is, or individual is having an event, they must allow the public to be able to attend the event. That does not mean the public is allowed to participate in the event. They're allowed to observe and be able to, basically be there to make sure the event is being held appropriately according to the regulations that are in here. So it would be no closed-door events if you were to follow the policy as it's written. Those are the primary items that I wanted to hit on as far as the library component, and I wanted to see if there were any questions, concerns, comments related to the library side of it. Hearing none. Let's talk about the historic courthouse, because that's obviously an important item. And that's the Section B. Under this draft, policy rooms of the Union County Courthouse may be reserved and used only in a manner and for purposes listed in this section. And so, these events are involving the participation of the county. And so, if the county hosts an event, if we have an event, then we're obviously allowed to use it. The county's participation in the committee, or a group, or a duly authorized employee acting as a representative of the county specifically, and events hosted by other governmental entities. I want to, I want to make sure everyone understands exactly what this means, because that hosting item is important. When it's hosted, that means it actually really is a Union County event. This is not a name-only, it would actually be our event. And so, to give you an example of how this would apply, is if anyone, either of our, our different parties, Republican, Democrat, or anyone, wanted to hold an event in that facility, they're not a government entity, nor would they qualify under this, because we would not be necessarily hosting them for a party event in that courthouse. So keep that in mind. There is no purpose that Union County is necessarily having to host a Republican event or a Democrat event. That's how this policy would be interpreted. So it would be specifically for use by Union County or government entities that the county is, that has involvement with. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. County Manager, but I think it's important that we point out, though, that these organizations, you know, could potentially meet at other county facilities, correct?
And I appreciate you saying that. That does not preclude them from asking to use a library facility, based on what the policy is for the library facility. It doesn't prohibit them from using the agricultural center or any other space that we might have available. It would be specific to the courthouse facility. Any questions on the draft as it is?
I think we, excuse me, sir.
Go ahead.
I think we discussed that we'll have time to go home and study this.
Absolutely.
Bring back any potential concerns or...
Absolutely. It is not intended for the board to take action tonight. If you have some feedback or questions tonight, certainly we can try to answer those. If not, at your pleasure, you can reach out to staff, and then we would, we would put this on a later agenda for you to really dig into making a decision on where we go with the policy. So it's really just, this is a discussion, that's all this is.
Who is the focal point for us to bring these items to?
I would have it to me, if you do not mind. And then we'll distribute it to the appropriate groups to make sure that they give us feedback on that.
Brian, I've got some feedback here. One thing that I've noticed in just a quick review of this draft that I think this should be considered is perhaps some language regarding misrepresentation of the description of the event versus what actually occurs at the event for any facility. So I guess where I'm going with that is, is that we need to make sure that when we're told that a certain organization would like to reserve a facility, and they provide us with a description on the reservation form, that that is, in fact, what is going on at that facility. And if that is being misrepresented, then I think that the county should be able to, at least potentially, restrict that organization from reserving a county facility for a period of time.
Certainly, and absolutely, that is, that's a reasonable request for us to consider as far as how we administer and enforce that, I understand.
Now, in terms of, you know, distinctions that matter, you know, an event that might be government speech versus an event that would be forum speech, is it fair to say that if the county is hosting it, it's government speech?
Yes, sir.
If some nonprofit group or Union County citizen is hosting it, it's forum speech, it's First Amendment speech?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Subject to the reasonable restrictions and that were listed here, definitions of reference to unprotected speech, that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think that's why it's important that the way the draft is for the historic courthouse, it actually is government speech.
Right.
That is what we're talking about.
Right.
And I mean, not a name-only, specifically government speech.
Right. So, you know, entities that have been using the county courthouse, the old county courthouse, will need to avail themselves perhaps of other space and other county facilities.
If the board chooses with the draft, that would be the case, yes, sir.
Right, right, okay.
So hearing no additional items, I think what we would do then is just, we would wait for the board to give us your feedback, and then we would schedule this to come back at some later date. I'm not, I'm not saying what that date will be. I want to wait to hear what the requests and feedbacks are come from the board, and then we'll schedule this for further discussion from the board, if you're okay with that process.
Speaking for myself, I'd like to spend some more time with this, and then I'm sure I'll have, you know, subsequent feedback, but I like what's been said thus far.
Okay, it's, I'll now recognize you again, Mr. County Manager, for your comment.
I have no further comments this evening, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, you added an item to the business portion of the agenda related to the former manager's contract.
Mark's contract. You need to take official action on the item that was added for the Mark Watson's contract.
The previous action was just to add it to the agenda. Now you need to take action in the form of a motion, which you have in front of you, some draft language.
And I will make that motion. It's a motion to authorize county staff to negotiate and execute an agreement, providing for the mutual release of claims and non-disparagement among and between Union County, Union County Commissioners, and Mark Watson related to the employment contract of the former Union County manager, such agreement being substantially consistent with the following material terms and other legal provisions. Number one, payment of $400,000 to Mr. Watson to be made in two equal parts, one in December 2023 and one in January 2024. Two, a mutual non-disparage agreement provision between Mr. Watson, Union County Commissioners, and Union County. Three, authorizing county staff to take reasonably necessary budgetary adjustments and actions to make these payments effective, including without limitation and authorization, without limitation authorization, to move funds from the contingency fund into an appropriate settlement fund. Four, including other essential legal terms and conditions. And five, authorizing county staff to take all other reasonable administrative and budgetary actions necessary to give effect to the agreement. All in favor of this discussion, or in this motion indicate by aye?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. It's now time for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Merrill wasn't able to be here tonight, but she asked if I would recognize Mr. Donald Thomas Acock of Matthews. Mr. Matthews recently passed away, and his funeral service was this evening. Mr. Acock was 102 years old and served in the United States Army in World War II. I had the opportunity to read his obituary earlier today, and it indicated when he was out in public, and of course, he's 102 years old, people would notice his World War II hat, and we want to buy his meal and get a picture taken with him and thank him for his service. The obituary went on to say that one young lady said that she wanted to thank him for her freedom. So, you know, that sounds really appropriate, that Mr. Acock has served in the military. He's 102 years old, World War II veteran. I'd like to tell his family that we're thinking about them. We certainly appreciate his service to our country, and we can all, or we would all like to thank him for our freedom. I would also like to say Merry Christmas to all of our wonderful Union County residents. Merry Christmas to my colleagues on the board, to our staff, our hard-working staff, and to our great county employees. I mean, man, we're giving out awards up here like nothing, and they're deserving. I mean, it's, it amazes to me, it's amazing to me, some of the things they do. And it's easy to say that, but I really, really appreciate the job they've done, not, not just recently, but all year long. And I know this is our last meeting for the year, but they are just a great bunch of employees. They go above and beyond, and they deserve every bit of recognition they get, and then so. Commissioner Hils, Brian Hils, Vice Chairman Brian Hils.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I will also echo your regards or your sentiments regarding the Donald Acock family. You know, him being 102 years old, and I also read his obituary earlier today, and very impressive, impressive military career, but very impressive man. A genuine hero that we had living here in Union County within our borders. So I'd like to offer my prayers for his family as well, and recognize his service and his contribution to our county as a resident as well. Also like to recognize our informal comment speaker this evening, Mr. Down, wise beyond his years. I think that we can all benefit from more of God's wisdom, and certainly appreciate your comments. I had the pleasure of spending some time with our Union County Inspections Department earlier this week. So I was able to schedule some time with some of Mark Griffin's folks, more specifically Darren Rape, and I was able to visit some of the sites there within our county and see what our inspections folks do. And I want to offer my thanks to those folks for, number one, putting up with me all week long. But then, number two, showing me their professionalism and the effort that they put into making sure that we have a minimum standard of construction here in this county that is up to North Carolina compliance and our North Carolina codes. They do a heck of a job for us, and I'd like to commend those folks. Last but not least, I'll say, again, Merry Christmas to each and every one of you, to our entire county. I'm thankful for the blessings on our county. I'm thankful for the folks that we have in our county, and certainly wish every single one of you, as well as our staff and our colleagues up here, and also Commissioner Merrill, who could not be here tonight, a very Merry Christmas, and also a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to Union County.
Commissioner Richard Hils. Commissioner Richard Helms.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to thank all our employees, especially our Sheriff's Department. They're going to work a lot over the holidays. We need to recognize them. We appreciate what they do, plus all our employees, because we're very fortunate. And I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
This concludes the regular meeting. Thank you for all who attended. I move that the board move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.